I called the January 8, 2019, worksite of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Clever.
Here.
This is Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Yes.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And before we start the meeting, my comments are really to the people attending. This is a council meeting, but it's a work session, and it's public. And this is a very difficult room to hear people. And so I ask everybody to turn their ringer off, their phone, and please do not have a sidebar conversation. If you need to talk to your neighbor, please feel free to go outside. If you want to address council, do that, not at this meeting, but individually with members of council. You're welcome to sign up as a non-agenda speaker. Please be courteous to your neighbor. It is a difficult room to hear each other. And with that, Dr. Pat.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. On January 1, 2019, health insurance coverage was expanded to an estimated 400,000 additional people in the state of Virginia. Local Department of Social Services began taking Medicaid applications on November 1, 2018. The state estimated that the city of Portsmouth might have up to 5,500 eligible citizens for the expansion. Additional administrative funding was provided to localities to assist in managing an increased volume of Medicaid applications. Portsmouth's share of the fund was $299,155. Mrs. Littlehill, the Director of Social Services, will provide an update as to the status of enrollment and preparation strategies for Portsmouth moving into the future. The second presentation is an update on initiative which members of City Council you re-initiated in the FY 2018 budget, the Neighborhood Incentive Matching Grants Program. In 2007, the program was designed to promote neighborhood enhancement projects that focus on three key areas: beautification, neighborhood improvement, and special community initiatives that encompass other projects unpacking the human element of a neighborhood. Mr. Doug Weller, Grants Officer, will make the presentation. The City Council Retreat is vastly approaching, giving the elected leadership a time for visioning, goal-setting, and setting the course for the city's future. We'll have a brief discussion on the retreat with some details from the City Clerk and the mayor. Mrs. Littlehill.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. So as Dr. Patton said, we've been preparing Portsmouth citizens in preparation to sign up for Medicaid expansion. We actually began working on this since August. August actually through the present. So, next slide, please. You have it here? Just this one? Thank you. Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the things we did to get our citizens ready. Department of Social Services actually hired a couple of eligibility staff. We hired about seven that were specifically dedicated to addressing all Medicaid expansion applications. So that's all they were trained on, and that's all they would do. And the reason why we did that was in preparation for the influx of the anticipated applications. In doing that, we also partnered with the Behavioral Healthcare Team, and we actually trained their staff to assist some of the citizens coming through behavioral health to help citizens fill out those applications. In addition to that, we also partnered with the Department of Health. So when we went out and we did several community venues, and I'll tell you what some of those are, we went in collaboration with the Department of Health. The reason why we chose to go with the Department of Health was simply because when we're talking about Medicaid expansion, a lot of questions would come up with signing up and finding my physicians, and how do I find my doctor, and what are these payments and things going to look like? By partnering with the Health Department, they were able to answer those questions for citizens. So in August, just to give you an idea of some of the venues that we did, August 2, we started with Church Lynn Library, and then we moved on to Craddock Library. The 31st of August, we did the Main Library and Manor Library. September 7, we hosted a forum at Social Services for the Faith-Based Community. On October 4, we hosted another forum at Social Services for the community civic leagues. On Wednesday, October 10, we also partnered with PRHA, and we did a couple of venues with them. We went to Phoebe Street. On the 17th, we went to Phoebe Street again specifically to meet with seniors. And then we also went back on the 18th. We also did the Hampton Roads Community Health Center. We did Homeless Assist Day. We did the Maryview View Foundation. And we did all of these things in between August through November. So let's talk about what happened with Portsmouth. So we talked about the state initially contacting citizens who were already enrolled, and said that they would send citizens out correspondence to say, hey, you need to sign up, and if you're interested, you need to sign this correspondence saying that you accept, and mail those back to the city. So these were our numbers as of December 28. There were 5,589 citizens that were contacted by the state. Out of that, 2,008, 19 citizens were actually enrolled by the state. However, 2,077 individuals were not enrolled for various reasons. 121 were not eligible after they went through the process of determining eligibility. 212 were possibly eligible, but they didn't complete everything they needed in terms of the determination. And the last of the citizens, which is most disappointing, 2,437, they didn't return that correspondence they needed to sign. So we kind of tried to think about, well, why wouldn't they return this correspondence? The correspondence was sent out by the state in different color envelopes. And I don't know if people sometimes look at envelopes and you consider it junk mail and you don't open it and you toss it. I don't know if that was the best plan. So the state then, after that, sent out a set of postcards to all of those people who didn't respond, saying, if you still get it into us, we'll fast-track you on January 4. And all that means in terms of fast-tracking is if you were already enrolled and received other benefits, they would enroll you automatically without you having to come down to DSS. So there is still hope for these 2,437 citizens. It just means now they're going to have to make direct contact with their local offices.
Now, is that a hard and fast deadline, January 4, 2019, for this year?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So after the 4th...
They're not...
Well, after the 4th, you can still be enrolled. It's just that you can't be fast-tracked. The state stops it, and then everything else is turned over directly to us.
Yep.
Could it be that circumstances changed on the 2,400, that they may have gotten health coverage through other means, employer, or have you?
It very well could be. It very well could be.
Other than the colored envelopes?
No, it wouldn't be just a couple of envelopes. But still, a lot of it is sometimes people just not returning mail. And they thought that was a big issue. But it doesn't mean that people didn't find health coverage by other means or credits.
Okay.
That's not a question.
Perhaps, and to your point, having been in this industry for a long time, a number of people probably did get information, and sometimes that information can be intimidating, and people may not understand. Or, you know, we do have some people that reading comprehension could be a problem. So there could be a number of reasons why those were... It's interesting that that many did not come back. Do we have a process, other than what we've done thus far, for attempting to continue to reach out to those individuals to encourage them to come in to see if they may qualify for that?
And we will be talking about that later on in the slide. I shall be well.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes?
Dr. Pat.
The 2,437, they are citizens who are a part of some kind of service through social services.
Yes, ma'am.
So they are getting state-supported services of some kind.
Correct.
So the likelihood, if they're still getting the services that they are getting, they haven't opt-out, that they've got jobs that they're making so much that...
Yeah, not necessarily. So again, people very well could still be eligible. It's just for them contacting us so that we can go through that process and look at incoming and all the other new requirements.
Sure. Any other questions? Please.
So there were some new FAQs put out by the state as it relates to non-citizens being eligible for Medicaid. So as I noted, Medicaid eligibility rules for non-citizens vary amongst groups, assuming that they still have to meet certain prerequisites requirements in order to be eligible. So we talk about that there are two that they need to meet. They need to be five-year residents of the U.S., and they need to have walked for 40 qualifying quarters, which is 10 years, that they need to be here. What about children of pregnant women who are non-citizens, most legal immigrants under the age of 19, and pregnant women who meet the financial requirements are eligible for full benefits without having to meet the five years of residency or the 10 years of work? Some of the immigrant children or pregnant women, such as those with visas or undocumented children or pregnant women, may only be eligible, though however, for medical services only. But again, until we actually get people in and sit down with you, we really won't know. So what this goes to your question, what are we doing moving forward in terms of enrollment strategies? So there's actually things we've already started on. We do plan to schedule several more community forums, and we do them. We actually go out, whether it be partnering with PRHA, going to the schools, going to civic leagues, hosting larger events at DSS. We will do all of those things again. Definitely, I'm trying to get to more of the schools, because this, the first time around, we only got to Hodges Manor with the PTA. So we're going to try to get on the venue with the rest of the PTAs in the school, and where they gave me a contact person to work with to coordinate that. Provide information to Portsmouth households via water bill inserts. We've actually already started working on that. So hopefully, that will be shortly, and marketing is helping us with those things. The other things are social media, the city website, e-blast, newspaper advertising, and the digital board. But I also have an interview coming up with PCB TV this Friday at 2:30 to do that as well. And I will bring the Chief of Benefits with me in case there's more questions. Any other questions?
Questions?
If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weller? We actually have a city council retreat. We'll pick that up after this presentation.
And which one is the advancement?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. I'm Doug Weller, the City Grants Officer. Tonight, I will be giving the Council an update on the FY 2019 Neighborhood Incentive Matching Grant Program. Specifically, the presentation will focus on reporting out the grant awards for the FY 2019 Neighborhood Incentive Matching Grant Program. For the fiscal year FY 19 program, the city received eight applications, of which two were deemed ineligible. We then awarded six grants totaling $25,000. The individual grant awards will be as follows by respective civic leagues and their corresponding Craddock Civic League, their project title is Transition 2018. They received a maximum grant award of $5,000, and that's the exact amount that they requested in their application. The focus of their project is momentum-building efforts on their 2018 Centennial Project. So this is a second year-end for them. They were funded under the beautification category, and they are a two-time award recipient. Old Town Civic League, submitted with Children's Harbor for them. Their project title was Operation Repair Fence. They received a grant award of $2,608. That was the application-requested amount. The focus was for eyesore remediation and perimeter safety concern repairs on their fence. They were funded under the neighborhood improvement category, and they also are a two-time award Wilson Ward Gosport Civic League, their project title was Truxton Memorial Year Two. They received a grant award of $4,000. The application-requested amount was $5,000. This is for continuation funding of their memorial slash meditation garden spot. They were funded under the beautification category of the grant program, and they also are a two-time award recipient. Port Norfolk Civic League, Fountain Park Functional Enhancement. They received a grant award of $3,355. That was their application-requested amount. It's for continuation of their functional and aesthetic improvements overall, over all neighborhood common areas. They were funded under the neighborhood improvements category. Again, they're a two-time award recipient. Shea Terrace Civic League, Scotts Creek Park Illumination is their project title. They received a grant award of $5,000. Application amount is exactly what they requested. Neighborhood effort, this scope, their project scope, was a neighborhood effort to beautify the downtown gateway path adjacent to London Boulevard. They were funded under the beautification category of the grant program, and they are a first-time recipient. Historic Truxton Civic League, their project was titled Neighborhood Centennial Beautification. They received a grant award of $5,000, and that was the application amount requested. This project will continue funding of the Historic Truxton 2019 Centennial Efforts to prep and beautify the community for the upcoming celebration, building on the preliminary work done in FY 18. They were funded under the beautification and the special community initiative category. They're a two-time award recipient. Since this was our second year under kind of the new program, there were a couple of takeaways from the grant program, and they've been pretty consistent from FY 18 to FY 19. So we have a recommendation for FY 20, and it's kind of an improvement opportunity for FY 2020, Neighborhood Improvement Matching Grant. That is a comprehensive rollout, marketing, and advertising campaign to increase exposure about the grant program across the city. We utilize all media instruments to provide blanket coverage. We'll promote the Neighborhood Incentive Matching Grant Program to gain citizens' awareness and understanding of the grant funding intentions. We're going to do this through a concerted campaign to visit, and it's that one highlight, the civic league meetings. A concerted campaign to visit every civic league, and making a grant program presentation at all the active civic leagues to make them aware of the program. I'll be doing that. In fact, I'm developing that presentation now as we speak. With that, are there any questions?
How much did we appropriate, and are there any funds left over?
It was funded at $25,000 for this level, and we had $25,000.
Okay. Dr. Pat.
We are recommending, Mayor, with the broad new strategies, to try to get other civic league groups and community groups involved, to propose that we move that in 2020 to $50,000.
This is somewhat related. Many of our neighborhoods have monument entrance ways that are, sit in the public right-of-way all throughout the city. And I think we should consider, because they get damaged from time to time, not putting this on the neighborhood, not even putting it on through the grant, but making it a city's responsibility that when a monument gets hit by a vehicle, that we take care of the repair.
Right-of-way?
Yes. No, those that are in the public...
Flowers and...
Yep.
The monument. We have one now, Mayor.
I think, yep, one at Glen Sheila at Hartford and High Street.
Yes. Did you want me to speak to that one?
The one at Maryfield's off River Shore Road, across from the middle school, got hit by a vehicle probably...
A year ago.
Four or five years ago, and it's still down. And I agree with doing that.
If we want to continue to try to enhance and make our neighborhood strong, because that is the essence of the city, we need to take on this responsibility, which is ours anyway. Do we have a consensus that we can ask the city manager to include this in the budget? Do we need special...
And put it under here.
Well, not so much separately if it happens.
No, okay, not the grant, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think, to me, like the wonderful historic stones or things that were done in Craddock around Athens Square and all, that's the perfect opportunity for this.
For that. But if the gates to Craddock were hit...
Yeah, but exactly. That's different.
Wish they had been.
Yes.
And we have replaced some.
But it hasn't been on a consistent basis. It's been very sporadic, so...
Well, I think that the key that you're saying, Mayor, is in the city right-of-way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, Mrs. Simmons was the one who called to my attention through Mr. Barham, who's a young family living in Glen Sheila. And they did some research and indicated that the first columns were put up by the city of Portsmouth, and that one time they were damaged, and C.W. McCoy was the city manager, and the city replaced them. So it was last week that I talked with Mr. McCoy, because we couldn't find no information in our database. Mr. McCoy acknowledged, they were correct. We did, and that was built years ago, way before I came into municipal government. So we are in the process of replacing that column that's the entrance. And the, I don't know what it's called, on the top of it that's missing, but Mr. Barham has that, that we can place back on it.
Just Castle Heights, Hunter's Point, Greenfield Farms, to name a few. Possibly even Siesta Gardens might have a monument or something.
Long point.
We have a consensus that...
Well, I mean, that's not something that happens every year.
Yeah, no, no.
Instead of getting into, it's not my job, this, we're going to claim responsibility for it.
Sure.
We have agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go down to the retreat.
Yes. I yield to Mrs. White.
Good evening, members of City Council. Your City Council Retreat is scheduled for Friday, February 1 through Saturday, February 2. Again, it will take place at the Wakefield Airfield Conference Center, and that's at 15189 Airfield Road in Wakeville, Virginia. The first session is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. on Friday morning, allowing travel time to get to Wakefield. At this time, all of the members of City Council have been scheduled for your meetings with the retreat consultants, which is next Monday. And after that takes place, then more formative agenda can be put together and released to the public so they're aware of what the items are for discussion for the retreat.
And the goal is to be done by mid-afternoon on Saturday?
Yes, sir. We're normally done around 2 o'clock.
I encourage everybody to keep your date with the facilitators, because that's an important part of making the retreat a success. We tend, not tend, we, in the last two years, have said to ourselves, what are the big things that we want to get done this year? So be thinking about the big rocks that we need to break in 2019. We'll assess what we said were our big things to work on in 2017 and 2018, and determine whether or not they need to be maintained on the list or taken off, because they're very much a work in progress. So as you think about those things, what is your vision of things that you would like Council to get done in 2019? Any discussion on this matter? So we're set up with the facilitators.
Yes. Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
You encourage us to get there early so we can check in?
Please.
And start sharply, promptly at 10?
Yes, and the attire is casual. Come comfortable, ready to work.
It was bitterly cold last year.
Yes, it was.
Goodness.
It was very cold.
Actually, please.
One thing I just didn't remember if you didn't take a note last year, I kind of thought about it last year, it just came back to my mind, about if we could take an AED with us due to the location that we're at.
Yes, sir.
We don't have the wonderful response time that we do here in the city.
Yes.
Hopefully, we won't need it, but it'd be nice to have.
Yeah, our cell phone, you have to walk out.
Head to 7-11 and talk to somebody.
Which is 42 miles away. Any other points? Okay, thank you. Dr. Pat, your report.
We have concluded our presentations, Mayor, for tonight.
Yes. Put your reports on the agenda.
I have no follow-up reports, other than the one that we're going to talk about in the...
Okay. Any questions on the agenda?
Oh, no, 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 Mayor. I'm sorry. Really zero out. I have two items on the city manager's report, and they are two grants. The first is a FY 19 K-9 vest grant program, and its adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Breeden Company, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department to purchase bulletproof vests for K-9 patrol dogs. On December 11, 2018, the Portsmouth Police Department was awarded the grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Breeden Company to purchase the bulletproof vests for the K-9 dogs. The city does not have to provide any matching fund, and the acceptance of the grant will increase the 2019 Grant Fund by the said amount. The second is another grant, and it's the FY 2019 Technology Trust Fund, and its adoption of an ordinance accepting the sum of $37,405 from the State Compensation Board Technology Trust Fund, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Circuit Court Clerk's Office to fund technology maintenance and improvements. And the Circuit Court Clerk's Office has oversight of all of the technology within the courthouse.
Any questions on these two? That concludes your, any report backs that you need to cover?
The report back is in our next part of our meeting.
Oh, okay. Council a's on report, because we have a relatively new council, and our new council members haven't had a chance to go to liaise yet.
I haven't had any meetings yet.
The Personnel Committee did meet. We'll be making some appointment decisions tonight.
Thank you, sir.
PRHA, I've met with them, but we kind of already know what's going on with that. So we do have a school board reorganization meeting this Thursday, which I will attend and report back next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, the regional jail, Hampton Road Regional Jail Board, we met on December 13. So this is the first meeting that we've had since that meeting. I'll start with some of the good news that we were given at that meet in reference to the fiscal responsibility, the new superintendent, David Hackworth, which he just completed his six months as the superintendent. The one was modification in some overtime issues, and it's estimated it's going to save over $200,000 annually. They also identified some other, about paying employees for lunch breaks, and they're doing some schedule changes, and that's going to save an additional $260,000 annually. some schedule changes, and that's going to save an additional $260,000 annually. The per diem, it's, in the past, was always expected to go up each calendar year, fiscal year, but he had told us, and it was in his report, that it's a 50% reduction in the proposed per diem increase over the next four years. So it's going to be a lot cheaper than predicted. Also, 50% reduction in the increase. So if it was going to be $2 per diem, now it'll only be $1 increase.
Still going up.
Yeah, but not as much. And as we just had a report on Medicaid expansion, they have implemented a process in the facility to obtain Medicaid approval for inmates currently eligible, as well as those that will be eligible this year due to the Medicaid expansion. They have enhanced our intake and booking area. They have reinstalled their live scan system, so if they have inmates there with charges from other jurisdictions, they don't have to be transported. They can be booked on new charges right there in their facility. The current numbers, and I got these numbers since that was in December, current numbers as of today, our contract, we have 250 beds in the regional jail. Today, there are 79 empty beds in the regional jail because they're not sending inmates over.
What's the per diem cost on that?
Per diem is $60.45, and I've got some numbers for that in just a minute. So the current jail population, the city jail population is 170 inmates today. So if the 79 were filled into beds that we're paying for already, that would only leave 91 total inmates in the city jail. Population is that far down. And just for an example, $60.45 per diem times 79 beds, that's $4,775 a day we're spending, and they're not putting heads in the beds. And for probably the entire last year, we've had, on average, usually always, 50 empty beds. And 50 empty beds times a per diem for a year is over 1.1 million that we're spending, and it's not being utilized. And it's all because the sheriff's department is not spending inmates. And I asked the superintendent today, when was the last time they took an inmate in? And he was going back days and days. He said he thought they might have took one in over a week ago, and there hasn't been any more intakes transferred from the city jail.
So the current population in our jail is 170?
170.
And if we were to, could they take, could the regional jail take the 91?
Yes. And that's a low, and that's a low number, and they have, and there's a lot of things that can be done and a lot of other things to look at, but it's, you know, there's some other procedural things. But as far as the number of bodies, that, I've been told, it is doable, that the regional jail could, we could work out how to do that.
And so what you're saying is that there's a possibility that we could have an empty jail on the waterfront?
Yes. That's, and that goes along with, you know, our four big things that we're talking about retreat, the Crawford Gateway Revitalization, basically for that entire city block, that's the holdout on that property. And with these low population numbers, you know, it's been talked about for years that the jail needs to be moved off the waterfront. I think with the population numbers we have right now, it's very feasible, and I think it would save us money to try to make that happen.
And the scary thing about moving the jail off was the capital expense of building a new jail, and what you're telling us tonight is that we have the capacity.
We had the capacity. The only things that would have to be considered that might be a little cost, but nowhere like building a structure, is we had to work out how to magistrate functions, because magistrate has to have public access and certain things like that that would have to be worked out with the regional jail. But I think it's very doable, and it would be at a very low cost for us to make these changes. And, you know, not even knowing how much we're spending utilities and everything else with the jail, I think we'd come out far ahead and, you know, fiscally by trying to make that move.
Any other reaction? We've got a while over here and a while over here.
I'd like to hear from the sheriff or the police chief why the population in our own jail is so low. That's shocking.
Yeah, it is, and I think until we hear from the sheriff, we can't draw any conclusions about whether that's just, is that an ongoing trend or just a blip?
And that's, I know, and I'm talking to the superintendent, I know the other local jails like Norfolk, it's just a trend going around that they're down in numbers, too. But out of all the participating jurisdictions in the regional jail, the other jurisdictions, of course, might fluctuate one or two because of intakes and releases, all their beds are full all the time. Ours are not. Ours are consistently 50 or more empty that we're already paying for.
According to the research, Mayor, that since the jail opened, Portsmouth has been the only jurisdiction that has never, ever filled all of their beds. But every night, we're paying for those beds that are empty. So every meeting, they give that report, and so we're always, and they kind of look at us.
And the business is called a take or pay.
Yeah.
You either take the beds or you pay for them.
We have to pay them.
Is there a consensus that we ask the sheriff to meet with us?
Absolutely. I think we, absolutely.
Do you want to schedule this at our next meeting, or, Dr. Patton, would you?
Before the retreat?
Yes, I think it would be beneficial to have it before the retreat.
All right, and we have the 22nd is...
Well, we have Monday and Tuesday.
No, Monday is not a meeting. It's a holiday. That's the issue.
Just checking.
Okay.
Somebody wants to meet on that day?
Mayor, the 22nd, that's a priority, so we will have, I will reach out to sheriff and have him to plan to come.
You might have to bounce some other things.
Yeah.
That's what I'm going to do. We will. It's a priority. All right.
Any questions from Nate?
I mean, we would love an opportunity where we wouldn't even need any beds in our city, but we know that's not the case. So, you know, we want to maximize where we can to make it work for Portsmouth.
Well, that's why I said that the sheriff and the chief are per designee, you know, there, between the two of them, they may have a theory on why they're...
We'll have chief here, too.
The numbers are right.
And Dr. Patton, we don't need to tell you this, but feel free to convene a meeting with the sheriff prior to this.
Oh, I will, definitely. Mm-hmm. And we have talked, we talked, we've talked about this, and now we'll move it.
But if the numbers are right, it sounds like we have an opportunity here that would meet the goal of last year, which was to get government off the waterfront. Shannon, you haven't had a chance to leave yet, but you did go to the newly-elected officials conference.
We, Paul and I went today. No, just want to let everyone know that based on the information, I thought it was very informative. I met a lot of other colleagues throughout the state, and some who even shared with me they met you last year, Lisa, and at their Facebook friends. So it was a good opportunity for us to learn about how to govern, and I think that as we continue to go forward, it'll even get better. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
Counsel, I did have two other things that I needed to add about PRHA. They did receive two, a letter stating that they were unfreezing, they had suspended their money that they were supposed to receive from HUD, so they're going to get two $500,000 stipings that is going to be restored, and they plan to use that towards the Lexington Place property. And there was some discussion, and I received a call from media regarding it, they had a discussion about their travel expenses, and the motion went forward for them to increase it to the specific number, and it failed for a second because the discussion between the commissioners was that the amount was too much for that, so...
Stat's report on the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance. As you know, the then-current executive director retired effective the end of last calendar year. I served on the search committee. We made a decision early on to go with a interim director and do a more comprehensive national search so that we can get the right headlight for this vehicle. And by that, that metaphor is, is that we need to make a shift in how that's funded from primarily being on the public sector to truly being a partnership private sector. The interim director that we selected, it was approved by the board, is Steve Herbert, who is not a stranger to, hopefully, no one in this room. Steve worked for the city of Portsmouth, was city manager of Suffolk, retired as deputy manager in Virginia Beach. And so he's got a strong background in economic development, and he's a known quantity, so literally, he could hit the ground running in the interim. And we told Steve that we don't, we're not looking for a caretaker, we're looking for a captain to, even though that he's going to be there for a short period of time, no more than a year, hopefully nine months, to get things done, to start that process of getting the private sector more involved. Okay, we do have a need for a closed session, and do I have a motion? Is there a motion?
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to statute subsection 2.2-37118.3 for the purpose of discussing the acquisition and/or disposition of publicly-held or controlled real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body specifically regarding, one, Crawford Bay, and, two, development of a new fire station.
Sir, we have a motion that's been duly made inside of it. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clark, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle was absent. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simus?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.